In order, please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, everybody. Beautiful day out there. Hard to believe in the third week of October. I'm not complaining. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
All right, looks like we're all here. That's good to see. Bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
Or I'd like to make a motion to approve Bill's payable in the amount of $114,576.38.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory. Yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our supervisors' report. Uh, let's see. Been dealing with a lot of building and blight issues. And our code compliance officer has been very busy, which is a good thing. The Blue Bill Bridge is moving forward. The temporary bridge, they pulled it out. They got the guardrails installed on the new bridge. And they're basically have to restore the area and pave the approaches and everything. They're getting close to wrapping it up. They did pretty good. Had a pre-construction meeting today for our sewer interceptor project where we're relining the interceptor, basically from Blue Bill Road all the way to the treatment plant, wherever it needs to be relined. That's in Elginak. And been very busy with all the paperwork that we have to do for the getting the grant, the million dollars for the EPA project. They're probably gonna start after the first of the year. And it will take about 26 weeks. But it's gonna be minimal for, they're not gonna be stopping much traffic or anything else. It's all underground and aside as far as traffic control or anything else, it'll be very minimal as far as that part of it. So that's all good. We did meet with Eagle on the contamination of the old landfill. And Eagle, basically, right now, they're waiting for a response from the landowner as to the letter that they sent them. So there's nothing new there. And we are working on ordering the approved equipment for the algae treatment plant for the aisle that the board approved. And I did file our quarterly reports for the MEDC grant that we received. And I know they're seeking some right-of-way easements that's going to be required for a stormwater drain going out to the river from the plant. Okay, getting ready to put our water main replacement project out for bid. We did receive our MDOT permit, and I think we're just compiling the contract book to go out for bid on that. And we did go out for bid on the outdoor exercise equipment for the park next door. As you recall, we received a grant that's gonna pay for 100% of it, $176,000. And it's gonna entail 17 units along the walking path with outdoor exercise equipment like elliptical, leg press, arm press, a bunch of good stuff. It's gonna be a nice workout going around there.
Wasn't that ARPA money from the county?
County, ARPA.
It wasn't a grant, it was ARPA.
Yeah, it was a grant. We had to apply for it.
I thought it was ARPA COVID money from the county.
No, we had to apply for it.
Okay.
And let's see, we're still busy quoting out for health insurance. And that's, hopefully, we'll get something here in the next couple of weeks, three weeks. Sometimes, in fact, we're right into end of November on that. And the County Road Commission completed the La Croix ditching project and reworked the drain near our San Soucy Welcome Sign, which looks nice. And we did order the windscreen for the pickleball courts. Thank you, Chris, for that.
Yeah, you bet.
And this week starts our Clay Township Police Hunter Safety Class, which is held October 22nd through 24th. You get about 50 people for that. And it's really a great program. Or they bring in the police, all kinds of people from the DNR and other agencies, teach them about, not only about hunter safety, but they teach ethics, how to be a good hunter. And it's a great program. And to all the police, they donate their time for this. It's during the week, so it goes till about 8:00 a night, so we feed them there. And it's all donated. It's a great program. And North Channel Sturgeon Classic was a success. They had 25 boats. And they sure did. They actually did it during the day for nine hours. Before, it was at night, and it lasted about 15, 16 hours, I'm sure, around there. But it was from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night. And in those nine hours, they caught and released 68 fish for 25 boats. And the largest fish was 74 inches long. So it was a big one. And we had a, it rained that night, so unfortunately, we had to cancel the entertainment that night. But that's all I got. Okay. Public comments. Do we have any public comments? I don't know. State your name and address, if you would, please.
I'm Andy Goulet, 9812 North River Road, Clay Township. I've been around for a long, long time. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I was going to show up because, as you can see, there are people with blue shirts here. They wanted six of you to see friendly faces in this crowd. And that one of you would subscribe to that the township is hiding things when they sit on this board and see all the materials that the other six of you see. And still want to subscribe to something like that should raise red flags to me, to the people in this room, to the folks at home, and to our children, who hopefully are watching because they are the future leaders of this, of all of it. Because we aren't gonna be around forever. Having said that, the main reason I'm here is because I saw a post on the social medias about why is it that there is a township police officer at the homecoming dance? Isn't it enough that they spend all day, every day, at the school? First of all, I want to set this straight for anybody who doesn't want to understand or wants to subscribe to something different. And I want to let all the folks in this room that may not know, and the folks at home that are in the cheap seats, and to our children especially about this. Years, several years ago, Clay Township and Elginak Community Schools, of which I'm a board member, I'm not speaking as a board member, I'm speaking as myself. We came to an agreement where the cost of a resource officer was split between the two entities. And this program has been nothing short of absolutely amazing. Officer Fajardo was the one that started with us. The students love him. He was there for only half of the first year that we did it. All, he knew all their names, they all loved him. And to this day, they all still do. On top of all that, Officer Fajardo donates his time to be a tennis coach with the girls. He's at school functions. He does all kinds of things on his own time that the township and the school district are not paying for. That our police officers cruise by our schools and show up and do things and are at events, showing our children, showing you, our children, that they care, they give a damn whether you walk or freeze, okay, is important. It's important for us to model behavior to our children and to our fellow citizens that we care about our most valuable resource. And for anybody to say that such a thing is a waste is absolute sin, I'm telling you, a sin. And it appalls me. It almost, I'm this far from being really angry about that because nothing could be farther than the truth. So I stand here before you to say thank you. Thank you for giving us Officer Fajardo and helping us with the cost of that. Thank you for providing grant dollars and DDA funds to do things to improve our school system. Thank you for investing in our children. This is the far most important thing that any of the seven of you can do. And for all of you to participate in and have a cognizant view of all these things is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any more public comments?
Hi, I'm Maureen. I'm not a Clay resident, I'm an Elginak resident.
What's your address?
I'm 602 Market. I moved out here and I got into politics after meeting Artie. Artie's kind of showed me some of the ropes, got me back into voting. I haven't voted in 13 years. And on my voting card, it even stated that. So Artie got me back into voting. Artie has shown me some good stuff, and I really look up to the board. I'm actually putting myself at risk doing this right now because I'm a stock victim whose life was threatened. So I am putting myself at risk because I'm going on TV, and I really don't care. Because all of you guys mean the world to me, and we need to keep you in council. What you have shown everybody, you do for the community and all of it, and the stuff that has been said about me out there on Facebook and Nextdoor has not been true. I donated artwork, and it's been said that Artie sold my work. That's not true. I donated that all because I helped with the windows. I helped with the windows, and Janice gave me that to do, to paint for the community. So, because she didn't want to do it. Who does that? A really good person, really good person. So I can't thank you enough, Artie. And you mean a lot to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Clements, 9400 Fullkirk Road. I, up until right before, I think, the primary election or right after, I didn't know anybody sitting on this board except for Kristi. And I hadn't spoke to Kristi in several years. She adopted the first dog that I ever fostered. And our kids go to school together. So it's been really challenging to put myself out there to support you guys because through this time, I have gotten to know who you are. I've gotten to know you on a personal level, on a professional level. I've come to board meetings that I never came to. But Maureen, we've interacted a little bit online, social media. We don't always agree. But I will say that I was at the meeting at the Lions Club that you came to. And then you, after you were asked, after you were asked to leave and you didn't leave, and then the next day, you're saying that Chris Hiltonan forced you out of there. I was there. I was there. I don't care about what anybody else says, but I was there and I saw what happened. And I'm, it's shameful, it's disgusting that you would go out there and put somebody who is such a strong part of our community, both Kristi and Chris, that does so much for our town, that does so much for our schools, and you would go on social media and continue it to this day. It's disgraceful. You have no, you should not be sitting on that board because I guarantee you, you are not what Clay Township represents. I don't want you being the person that demonstrates to my daughters or to my son what a good person is because you're not one. I don't know you personally, but I observe you. I observe you on social media. I observe you with, you call all of us, well, you and your friends, call all of us Artie's cronies. I didn't know Artie until a couple of months ago, other than seeing him around town as a supervisor because he is involved with this community, because he loves this community. And the people that you're running with now, where are they? Where are they? They aren't here, they don't give a crap about us. They can sit there and run their mouth, they've been here one time. One time. All the other people that are lining up to back you up online as you're bashing the board you sit here with, where are they? They're not here with you, they're not here supporting you, but they'll be keyboard warriors. But when it comes down to it and the things that really matter, these are the people that care. What are they hiding? Just like the other person said, you see it. So what are they hiding? You know, it's nothing.
Any more public comments?
Hi, good evening. My name is Linda D. Kaiser, and I live on Riverside Drive. I didn't get the blue shirt memo, so don't think of anything else but that, okay? Don't know where I purchased that, but anyway, I am here tonight, and my public comment is, you know, I love Clay Township, like most everyone here that are present tonight and viewing. Ever since we've moved in here, my parents have had property in Marine City for close to 70 years. So I'm familiar with this area, grew up in this area. But in any case, we've lived here close to 25 years. And I've never seen anything like this in all the years that we've been here. The bashing to our board, and I'm sorry. I'm here to say for you, I'm sorry. I know that, I worked in the automotive industry, this is more than a full-time job for all of you. You run with your heart on your sleeve. There's never been a time that I've emailed or called, and it can be 24/7 with an issue, and I have gotten a response back. That says a lot about the community. It's such a wonderful place to live, to raise kids, to be an empty nester, to embrace the waterways and all the nature and all the beauty we have. Why does it have to be like this? Can we just have an even vote? Why do we have to, why are you being bashed? The other thing I'd like to ask is, or say, is I'm sorry that Cordis Brothers, I'm sorry for Cordis Brothers being bashed as well. From what I know from Cordis Brothers is that their bid was the only bid that came into the township, as far as I recollect. For the bathrooms, the pickleball court, the playground, it was a larger bid. I don't know where this misinformation is coming from. But what I would like to leave with this evening is that I would like to ask our 8,000 voters that are registered, or roughly about that number, to come out and please vote. Because your one vote could be the difference in who gets elected. And we want our same board because we've had a good life. We have a pickleball court, pirate ships, the bridge on Merrill Drive where I live, that bridge, it's beautiful, it was done by all railroad ties, and they were so, so precise about the bridges. The marsh, all the work that's gone in, and grant writing, I brought it up to my neighbor the other day, I said, do you know, did you look at Clay Township, like how many grants that Clay Township has been able to get awarded for us? Grant writing doesn't, you have to go to college to be a grant writer. Nobody can just write a letter and say, I want $150,000 to do this. There's a lot of detail, you have to, you know, really know your specific engineering and all the detail to get that grant. And to get that grant awarded is a gift, and that's because of good grant writing. So please, if you're the 8,000 voters, come out because Artie's job, all the board's job, is more than a full-time job. I don't know where the baloney's coming from about the raises, all this behind-the-scenes stuff. But if you want to know the facts, the board will tell you, and please come out and vote. We only had like 2,400 voters for the, for the primary, if I'm right, right around that number. That's why we have to do the write-in. So thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Any more comments? Okay. Well, moving on, thank you. Moving on, consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the report for board approved from 10/7, in between meetings from 10/7 to 10/21, and the board meeting minutes of 10/7.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion granted or passed. Moving right along to unfinished business. First one is place gate, change order charge. And I'll just say, I haven't, that hasn't been determined yet, so.
Just leave it on there.
Yeah, postpone it again. Someone want to make a motion? So moved. I moved it.
Sure, so moved.
Okay, any support?
Support.
Okay, with motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? It passes. Next, we have Zimmer's roof gutter replacement. And since Chris has been working on that, I'll just turn the floor over to Chris.
Yes. Shall we have a motion and then discuss, or would you like to discuss it as an open topic?
Let's discuss it and talk about the tree too, then we'll do motions.
Can we have Lance come up to the podium, if you don't mind, Lance? I think you're kind of involved in this whole situation.
Yes.
So we had a storm, right? And we have an extremely old and large maple tree on the side of our meeting hall. It's right outside the building over here. It's in between the asphalt parking lot and the building itself. The tree has given us problems over the last few years, to the event where we've once had to file an insurance claim and actually end up replacing the roof, the EPDM bid that we approved last year. So after the roof was replaced by Zimmer Roofing Company, they replaced the gutters, the apron flashing, the termination bars, all the stuff that goes with it, and provided a warranty, and it was a substantial warranty, understanding that our obligation is to keep it maintained, keep the leaves and debris off of it. Well, the tree in our recent storm, as recent as early this summer, I believe, was it a, I don't know if it was the May or the June storm.
There was actually three trees.
There's three trees?
There were two pine trees that actually laid right against the building, and then a limb off of the other one that you're speaking of.
And so that created additional damage to both the roof and the gutter?
Correct.
Right? And since then, you've had the pine trees removed?
We took the pine trees down, yes.
Right. And so to get back, to double back, if any of you watched the last meeting, Mark Burchard was requesting some insurance information about, like, why don't we write a supplement for the gutter repair and include it as part of our original insurance claim? Well, the original insurance claim was for the complete roof membrane, the entire EPDM roof, gutters, apron, flashing, all of that. The second claim that Lance was talking about, also, I'm sorry, let me back up, the second event, the wind event, that actually pushed the pines into our meeting hall and destroyed the gutter and punctured the roof, we didn't file a claim on. So, Mark, after some further research, we never filed the claim. And given the size of our deductible in relation to the quote from Zimmer Roofing, it didn't make sense to file the claim. So now, we get back into the Zimmer bid, which was $6,591. I requested a couple of outside bids, like I said I would do, and there's a couple of issues with that. Number one, they're all fairly competitive. The bids ranged from, the bids ranged from $4,600 to right around $5,400. Then I called Zimmer Roofing, right? And Zimmer, it's my understanding that they now warranty our roof, and will do so for the next 14-plus years or so, right? So I talked to Mark Winter, who had agreed that he would sharpen his pencil, they would create the new gutter system in-house, include the apron flashing with it. And he solicited, or revised his bid from $6,591 down to $5,400. So it's a better price. He came to work for us. Could we get a better price than this? I think we could. Like, I think we could probably save another 100 bucks, 200 bucks, it'll be close, it'll be close. The issue is, if we go outside of Zimmer Roofing, we're going to void our warranty. And we still have 14 years left on our EPDM roofing warranty. EPDM roofing, that's expensive, you know, it's $1,200 a square membrane. So that's a, you know, it's a, I don't remember what it was, but 90, $100,000 roof job. So it's my recommendation at this point that we approve the Zimmer Roofing bid. It's been revised at $5,400. And part B of this is I would like to solicit three quotes to have that large maple tree removed and the stump ground down. I don't believe that it is good practice to replace the gutter system without addressing the cause of the problem, which are the tree. Two of the trees have been removed by our DPW. Thank you very much. The third tree is large.
It's a pretty good size.
Would we want to tackle that, Lance, or outsource it? I mean.
The branch that leans over the building is the one that worries me.
Yeah.
The rest of them, we can drop out in the parking lot, but.
That's, yeah, we can get.
That's a pretty good, pretty good sized tree.
Yeah. We know enough people around here, we can get three quotes.
So, and my suggestion would be in looking into like a building and maintenance fund, like, I believe that we budgeted as a group $35,000. $35,000. And I believe as of today, we've only spent about $2,200. So there's room in that budget if we so choose. My gut tells me this tree removal is gonna be somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000. It's a giant tree, it will be very expensive to remove. But I'd like to begin the process of at least soliciting three quotes. So I'm asking for two things tonight. One, I would ask for approval for the $5,400 gutter repair by Zimmer Roofing. And secondly, I believe we should solicit three quotes and hopefully brought back by next meeting to perhaps get that approved through the building funds, I'm sorry, building and maintenance, and.
Can I, it's up to the board, can I make a recommendation?
Please.
How about if we solicit three quotes? How about if we solicit three quotes? And we'll take the lowest of the three quotes, just to save time. And, but not to exceed 7,000. Are you comfortable with that?
No.
No, okay.
No, I'm really not. Large tree removal is, like, tree services ebb and flow. Like, there's times where tree service people, they don't have much to do. And they're willing to cut you a break to keep their crews busy.
Yeah.
And there's other times where tree service people are very busy, and you're going to pay a premium rate.
Yeah.
So, I'd feel much more comfortable if we, if we solicited the bids and we brought them back in front of the board to talk about them.
All right.
Only because I believe it could, it could range significantly.
Okay.
And I'd like to say one thing. On Zimmer's behalf, when we had the damage with the roof, there were holes in the roof, and it was rain scheduled the next day. They were nice enough to come out here with the drop of the hat and fix all the holes that were on our roof.
Yeah.
I mean, they, I mean, it was within, I don't know, 10 hours, they were here. So.
I, I think they're a quality crew, I really do. And I think the bid is, I'm going to call it fair because there's a lot to it. You know, they have to strip the EPDM, they have to open it all up, and they have to basically re-roof and hang a 92-foot gutter. It's commercial gutter, right? So, it's not a standard, can't buy it at Home Depot.
Correct.
So, I just want to express to the board that I believe there's a part two, and it involves that large maple tree. And I think we should also at least get that in our crosshairs and get some bids rolling. So, I guess the first part of my process is I'd make a motion to approve the Zimmer Roofing and Construction bid of $5,400 to remove and replace the damaged gutter along our meeting hall.
Support.
Here we have motion and support. I, I think we should delay the gutter repair until the tree's removed.
I would agree with that. So. Or the motion, okay.
Yeah.
So, I would agree with your amended.
Okay, thank you.
Addition to my motion. We will, we will delay the gutter replacement until the tree has been addressed.
All right, do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, thanks Lance.
Thank you Lance.
We have a request from Elginak for their water plant to update their SCADA. Yeah, the filters. AWP SCADA filters. The SCADA programming is really the heartbeat of the water plant as far as monitoring it, controlling the pumps, I mean, everything on it. And they had, this was, this was planned, they had budgeted $75,000 to do this update. And they got a quote for $68,080, which of our contract, Clay would be responsible for And part of the contract is we have to approve it for them to go forward on it. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
So, already this was in their CIP 2024?
Yes. Yes. Yes, it was. And they had it budgeted for $75,000 in it. Came under their budget. John, you know how important this whole program is.
So, this is the company that they have currently for their.
Yes.
Current system?
Yeah. And they're, I think they're exclusive for SCADA.
Well, I can see why I'd want to stay with the same.
Yeah.
Company if that's in place.
Right.
And it's expiration date on the filters now, right? Because I know we let, last time we let them run over.
Well, that's the actual physical filters. This is more programming and.
This is like the code that runs all of the software.
Yeah. This is, yeah, this is hard, this is the software.
Monitors the plant, the history of the plant.
Yep.
Transmitters.
So.
And we have a contract for a portion of these repairs, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's 65%?
Sixty-two.
It's almost 64%.
Yeah, it varies. It went up to 64%. It's based on our usage. So, for them to go forward, we'd have to give them approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the Elginak Water Plant SCADA filters for $68,080, with Clay's portion being $43,417.13.
All support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our, um, letter for, from UHY for our annual audit. And it's $39,500 for our audit. And it did go up some. It was $36,500, went up 3,000 bucks.
Make a motion to approve the UHY Annual Audit Engagement Letter and audit in the amount of $39,500.
All support.
Have motion and support. Any discussion?
Know how much an audit costs.
It used to be, it used to be.
Really high.
$80,000.
Yeah. Plant Morandays?
Yep. Plant Morandays and, and, yeah, yeah.
You know, their address for, it's Paul, right?
What?
It's Paul?
Yeah, Bailey.
Bailey. Their address is here on.
Yeah.
And I was looking today, out of curiosity, I was looking at their website, and they're a global company.
Yeah, they are.
Who is global?
It was Stewart-Belay.
And Whipple?
Whipple. And UHY bought them out. Same people, though, we're dealing with.
They also manage numerous funds.
Oh, yes. They, they do a lot of municipal, they do a lot of service organizations.
503C.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, they're.
Make sure our eyes are dotted and they're.
Oh, boy. So, I know they keep us busy during the audits. So. Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next thing, we've been reviewing our rates we charge for our ZBA. And unfortunately, how it works, for all these things that the township charges, is we can't make a profit. But we should cover our expenses. Right now, our current rate we charge the applicant is $250. But our cost is for a township ZBA meeting where the board members, the planner, et cetera, et cetera, public notice is a big one, it's $457. So, we're losing, you know, a couple hundred bucks every time someone wants to come and, and, you know, before the ZBA, which means.
Unless we have them stacked up, right?
Yeah, unless you have them stacked up.
Unless we have them stacked up, then we'll break even.
Right, then we'll break even if we have two or more, which doesn't happen often. But essentially, everybody else is subsidizing the one person before the ZBA. So, this, this will put it more in line to the 450 charge to cover our expenses to have that. So, that's, that's what we want to pass.
So, the zoning board of appeals, 450. That's when they appear for that. And the other charges are all in addition. Correct?
Other charges.
Rezoning, another 350.
Well, that's. But everybody doesn't rezone.
Well, right.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying. I remember a couple of years ago, we decided that at some point in time, as far as permits are concerned, instead of going to the planning commission and presenting it, and then going back and getting another fit and having to pay again, that we kind of put that off to the side, you wouldn't have to do that anymore.
For planning?
Yeah, for planning.
Right.
Well, so, I thought it would've been the same as ZBA.
Are you only changing that one fee from 250 to 450? Because I see a lot of fees here.
Uh, for special site plan review, we're raising, special approval land use, and special meetings. Because that reflects money we have to pay our planner and our building staff to review them.
So, everything that's highlighted is an increase?
Yeah. The department head reviews, engineering fees, and legal fees are basically as required or needed, just previously weren't listed. So, we just wanted to make a point, if needed, that there would be a cost attributable to them.
What's the increase?
Almost 200 bucks.
It's almost double. 250 to 450. The site plan review used to be, what, 480?
I didn't look in the audit.
300?
What was our deficit in our billing? Was it like $40,000?
Somewhere between 30 and 40.
Yeah.
I mean, we, the township loses between 30 and 40,000 dollars.
Every year? And that's just our balance?
Per year. So.
So, this legal as required, they don't know what they're going to have to pay there, but we're going to charge them? I don't get that.
It depends on if they have a meeting with the attorney, or if the attorney has to review anything. So, they basically have created an Excel spreadsheet, and then they'll, when somebody applies, then they'll put check marks where it could be applicable, so that they have an idea of what it's going to cost.
So, they'll know their attorney fees is so much per hour, and it's not going to exceed so much, so many hours? I mean, are we going to give them an idea like that?
I believe so, yeah.
Doesn't really say that.
That's on that spreadsheet, right? How much the attorney is depending on per hour.
Excuse me, that's probably just a T and M as, as required, right? Or needed?
Correct.
And again, as already stated, like, we need to get these fees in this department's head above water. It's not right that the township constituents and taxpayers should have to, we have to dip into our general to cover the cost of a ZBA permit, or a rezoning permit, or a site plan review. Like, they should stand on their own merit.
Correct.
And that's the idea, right? We're not proposing this be a profitable venture for Clay Township.
No, it's against the law for the township to make a profit.
Right.
But, you know, right now, like I say, we're losing between 30 and 40 grand a year.
We're trying to at least cover our costs. I should say at least.
How do we compare to other communities like Marine City, New Baltimore?
So, we're low?
You're low.
And I think the last time, when was the last time we, we reviewed the pricing? What was that original sheet from 2006 or 2011?
I came on board in 2015.
We were low then. So, these haven't been raised in nine years?
I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-30. It's amending the schedule of fees, charges, and expenses.
Support. Okay, I have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
I'm going to abstain.
You can't, you got to vote.
I don't think I have enough information. I want to know if the legal fees and all that are going to be in there.
They are.
I want to know that people are going to be told how, how many.
They do.
Hours. All right, as long as that's going to happen, I say yes.
Okay.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, let's see. Fire Department, new hire Donovan Dewicki and Jared Delia. Help me out, Jared.
Deli.
Deli, Deli, okay. Sorry about that. The last guy, I really messed up.
Sorry.
No worries.
That's all right. Good evening. I'm requesting permission from the Clay Township Board of Trustees to hire two part-time firefighters, Donovan Chase-Dewicki. Donovan is currently in reserve status with the US Army until 2008, excuse me, 2028. Donovan is a longtime resident of Harsons Island and a graduate of Elginak High School.
That's correct.
He is currently, holds a State of Michigan EMT license. And if hired, we would like to send him to the Fire Academy in January. Did you want me to get the other one, or you want to vote? How do you want?
Let's do them both.
All right. Jared Michael Delai. Jared is currently unemployed after he's just graduated from the Fire Academy. He lives in Chesterfield Township, graduate from Lance Cruz High School North. He attended Macomb Community College Fire EMS program. He holds a State of Michigan firefighter one, firefighter two, also has med ops, and he also has a State of Michigan EMT license. We've interviewed him, and they've passed their background.
Awesome.
Not Donovan, not you?
Yeah.
You duck hunt?
Yes, sir.
Of course he, of course he duck hunts. And you'll be, there's a course, or December, right? For Fire One and Two?
Yes.
Yeah, for Donovan, okay, great. Great. I asked, I got to ask everybody this. I, I know Donovan's answer already, but do you know how to swim?
Oh, yes, I know.
Okay. Just got to get it out there.
Yeah.
All right. Awesome. And Donovan lives on the island, Harsons Island. And anybody have any questions for these fine young gentlemen?
Jared, where'd you get your certification?
I got my certification on, it was the first week of May.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Perfect. Perfect. Where do you live at?
I live at Chesterfield Township. It is, I'm on 21 Mile in between Grash and I-94. So, from here, it's about 25-minute drive.
That's far. Good. Very good. Thank you.
Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to hire Donovan Dewicki and Jared Deli for the Clay Township Fire Department. Effective when?
Immediately.
Immediately. As you vote for him.
I'll support that. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion or questions? Well, we got them on the hot seat.
Chief, the last two of your three potential hires are local, and I just wanted to applaud you.
Yes.
I think that's a tremendous benefit to our community, to our residents, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
We have motion and support?
We do.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you much. All right, Planning Commission, reappointment of Skip Tronjo?[1786.53] Tronjo?
Tornal.
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 I'm bad today. So he's been, this is, I think, would be his third term, maybe? Yeah. And I recommend that the board would, uh, reappoint him as, um, uh, to the Planning Commission.
Well, I work with Skip on the Planning Commission, and he has, uh, he brings a lot to the table. Very, very intelligent in planning, uh, ordinances, and, uh, he's a welcome, uh, addition. So I would make a motion to approve Skip as far as a reappointment to the Planning Commission, Skip Tornal.
Okay.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion?
Term starts on the fifteenth of November of twenty twenty-four and goes to the fifteenth of November twenty twenty-seven.
Yes.
Right? It's a three-year term?
Yep. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next we have, uh, reappointment of DDA members. This is to get them all reappointed and in line. Um, I'm, uh, I'll make the motion. We, we rea- we appoint Mark Thompson for one year, all starting November fifteenth for a one-year term. Richard Seifer, one-year term. Joe Little for a one-year term. Robert Johnson, everyone knows him as Bobby Johnson, two-year term. Roy Martin, two-year term. And Thomas Bynum, two-year term. And Ann Kager as a three-year term. They've all been on the DDA for a long time and have a lot of experience.
Support.
Okay, I got motion and support. Any discussion?
You've been doing a great job for my PC.
Yep.
On the project.
Yes.
Basically donating to.
Yes, and, uh, get off on a little tangent. I just learned today that, um, I was talking to the County Road Commission that the Safe Streets Grants are available and are well-funded. And I know the DDA was looking at a project to do a sidewalk on Fruit Street. And they, because there's no, there's no shoulders there, big ditches, lot of traffic, and that's how a lot of kids would get to school. And all the school buses run down Fruit Street. And I think it would score pretty highly on that, so I was going to start working on that. If, uh, the DDA looked at it five years ago, and it was over a million dollars to do that one mile. They couldn't just, just swing it at that time. But if we could get it half-paid for, uh, they may be, uh, willing to do that, so. Just want to throw that out. Um, okay. Do we have any more discussion? I'm sorry about that. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next, uh, just to, uh, we wanted to retain the services of Caslow. I call her Karen, our planner. As you recall, we gave her, uh, I think, four or five months thing, um, just because our, our current planner retired. And Mark could, well, I hopefully comment on the job that she does. He, she's been with, working for Clay, oh, eight, ten years ago, she was with Steve Berchler. Um, then we went from there to clear zoning. They got bought out and she was working on Clay Township for them, uh, then. And, um, then we had a couple others, and she was with Steve Cass and Case and, and working on our stuff. So she's very familiar with us. And, um, this would be a one-year extension, uh, through November twenty twenty-five. Want to comment on the
Right, right, yeah, Karen is a welcome member to the Planning Commission. She, another person that is very knowledgeable with our ordinances, and she has worked on, with numerous planners with the Planning Commission, uh, from past eight years, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she's, uh, has put a tenure with the, with the Planning Commission, and, uh, I supported her rehire. I think we'll move on from there. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, uh,
Thank you.
To a point. Uh, we read it there. Retain the services of Karen, uh,
Caslow.
Caslow Law Planning, uh, effective November twenty-fourth through November twenty-fifth, uh, for the, uh, planning supervisor.
Planner.
Planner.
Support.
I'll get it up sooner.
Yeah. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
How is she compensated? How do we compensate her hourly, or does she have a contract?
She has a, you have a contract. She has a retainer fee. And it's a lot less than, we did go up for quotes. Uh, there was, um, Waytrim is about two thousand dollars more a month, and then there was Foster, I can't remember, Foster and somebody. And they were like, uh, more money than that. Um, but, uh, yeah, she, she does, uh, there's a contract with a, a retainer to answer all our questions, uh, and, and go to the meetings. And then depending on the size of the project and, and the value, there's a schedule that she, she makes.
So how much is her retainer?
Five fifty, I said, yeah.
Oh, okay, five fifty a month?
Yep.
And then more is needed? Like, is it hourly?
Well, that would be the resolution that we just passed where it says, you know,
Legal services as needed, but that's why I was not for it, because it doesn't give any specifics. I don't know.
Well, it does.
The attorney is legal. She's the planning portion.
Yeah, it does. It, it, it depends on the size of the project. The bigger the project, she gets a little bit more. It, it, and it's all spelled out in the contract.
So you don't know the monthly amount?
Yeah, I just did, five fifty.
Five fifty, that's the retainer?
Right.
But the hourly fee?
Every project is different.
There's no hourly, it's a flat fee.
Oh, flat fee for the project.
Based on the project. If someone comes in with a project, I want to develop two hundred acres. They can look at, okay, the fees for that two hundred acres for our planner would be this amount per our contract, so they know, we know how much to charge the developer, and Karen knows how much she's going to get.
All right.
And you'll see that figure in the financials, and when you look at it, you'll go, that's not very much money at all for what they're doing.
Yeah, five fifty, you show up at the meeting and everything. That's a good deal.
And the responsibility is pretty heavy on them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, you know, right now, I know we, we plan, we text her on doing research on a few new ordinances. That's all covered on the five fifty.
That's great. Okay.
All right, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Is she your own company? Is this her own business?
Yeah.
She, she doesn't work for Steve or anything else?
No, she, she's No, I, I tell her Karen, maybe, get the LLC. Start, start your, you know?
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, that's all.
You, you're going to, and she's very approachable too. You going to ask her any questions?
Yeah, we met her at our joint meeting.
Yeah.
Didn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next we have board member comments. Cindy, you got anything?
I do.
I bet you do.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, um, and for taking your time here this evening. I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the whole board does as well. Um, early voting starts October twenty-sixth, uh, it's a Saturday, right here in this room, runs through November third, eight to four PM, eight AM to four PM every day. I want to say welcome to Donovan. Thank you very much for your service, and then also welcome to Jared. And that is all I got.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to our new firemen.
All right, Maureen?
Yep, welcome Donovan and Jared. Um, I guess over the weekend, we had the cheer competition here, and the eight, nine, ten-year-olds took third place. So congratulations to them.
You got good townsville vocals.
And have a safe and happy Halloween, everyone, too. Be careful out there.
Mark?
All right, congratulations to Donovan and Jared, uh, CEO on the street. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, trustee O'Regan for, um, getting the cost reduced on the, on the gutters and clearing up the issue with the insurance. Thank you very much for that.
You bet. Chris? Yeah, let's, um, let's start with, we'll just double back on the pickleball screen real quick. Um, the board authorized twelve hundred bucks. And I think that bid came in at one thousand fifty-four bucks. So it's been ordered. It should be in the first week of November, and, um, then we'll have to make a decision if we're going to hang it this year. Um, they don't want it up all year, um, so it, we'll have to make a decision if we're going to hang it for a month and then take it down, or what we're going to do there. Um, the Lions Club wants your blood. And don't forget they have an Algonac Lions Club, um, blood drive scheduled for Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, on Halloween from nine AM to three PM.
That's scary.
That's at Mill Street. That's at Mill Street.
Vampire will be there.
Yeah.
Um, and lastly, um, I've been out duck hunting a couple times already, Mark, and I'll just tell you that duck hunting right now is good. The refuge is solid with over ten thousand birds and tons of geese. So when the weather starts to cooperate, and if you like fowling, then get out and enjoy it.
Yep. Kristi?
Congratulations to our new hires, and also, everyone's favorite time of year, we're prepping winter tax. So that'll be mailing out at the end of November, um, and it'll be payable beginning December first.
All right, thank you, Kristi. Donovan, Jared, congrats, thank you. Whatever you guys need, uh, let us know. Uh, we want you to be successful here, okay? So you need anything, you let us know. Andy, your comments about that resource officer, I couldn't agree with you more.
And thank you again.
I couldn't agree with you more.
I deserve it.
Um, one thing that, you know, we talked about when we, we first got a resource officer is a lot of the kids, you know, in high school and stuff, they, they weren't used to dealing with a police officer, and if they see a cop, they would hide. And that's not what we want. We want them, if, if they, they need help, we want them to look for the police, not hide from them. And doing, putting that resource officer in actually changed that a lot. And, uh, that's, that's a, a, a really big, um, thing that, that, that resource officer did. And, um, I'm going to say for the record, too, Cordis Brothers is a very good local company. They, I, I know them. I know a lot of their employees. They hire a lot of local people that work here. And when, um, they sponsor, I don't know how many Little League teams they sponsor um, and other events, they sponsor the bump and run. Without Cordis Brothers, that bump and run would not even exist. They, they do a lot for our community, and, uh, why is it not smart to hire a local firm? Keeps our money here. So, um, everybody have a safe Halloween. I, I know there were some festivities this past weekend. Halloween lasts like a month, I think, doesn't it? So, so we, we have another week and a half or so. But, uh, other than that, everyone enjoy themselves, be safe, and, uh, thanks for coming, everybody. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody.